We're going to call tonight's order, a meeting of the politics, city council. Manny, would you take a roll call, please?
Voight-Latrell?
President.
Kent Miller?
President.
Bob Richard?
President.
Robert Peterson?
President.
Matt Audie?
Here.
Tony Kingler?
Yes.
Rick Brown?
Here.
Thank you. You all stand with me for the invitation. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for continuous to let us meet here to govern our city, to make the proper decisions that will have the best outcome for all of those in our community. We thank you for all of the freedoms that we have in our country, in our community, and we thank you for blessing our servicemen and our law enforcement so they can be safe and keeping us safe here and home. In your name we pray.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lloyd, do you have any comments at this time?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Glenn for his years of service here as the city administrator this evening last night. And I know, me personally, you've tolerated a lot of my learning as a counselor, and I appreciate your tolerance of that. I just want to say thank you, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you, Matt.
Same here. I really appreciate everything of the city of Beloit, and for all of us as council members and employees, and really appreciate Glenn. Good luck.
Thank you. At this time?
Just, I'll go, you know, good luck to Glenn. I know he does a lot of stuff we don't know about. Appreciate it.
Tony?
Nothing extra here.
The only thing I got, even though we had cold weather over the weekend, the VFW served 433 people at practice. So we kind of enjoy doing that.
Thank you. Glenn, I also want to thank you for your leadership and your advice and the things you've taught me also, along with Matt and some of the others. We've accomplished a lot, and we've got ways to go, but you brought us a long way. And again, thank you. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
Yeah, just a couple things. First of all, I want to thank Glenn as well. I've been here almost five years. This is obviously my first city attorney job, and he's been great to work with, taught me a lot along the way. We've had a lot of projects come and go in those five years, so it's been, it's been good, and he will be missed for sure. The one thing I wanted to ask you was, the next meeting, we are going to be adopting our code, and that will be adopted by ordinance. This is the first draft that the company sent me, so it's got all my notes and everything in it. It's obviously been tweaked here and there. Question is, does anybody want to see this final copy before you vote on it? It is available online.
I couldn't get all that.
Didn't work? Okay. So I need to know, because I could have the company send them soon.
Unless you...
You should be able to. I'll, I'll check the link, because I'm able to view it online.
You can send me that email?
The link, yes. So hard copies?
Please.
Three?
Three.
Four. Okay.
And I can pick it up down here, I mean, just...
Yeah, I will let him know tomorrow, and hopefully he can get them in the mail right away, so that you give you about a week to 10 days to, to look through it. And then we'll be voting first week in February, hopefully, on that ordinance to adopt the whole thing. And then he will distribute the final copies to all of you, and then we'll have three copies in the office for the public to, to view. So I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Glenn?
Well, we'll start off here on a high note. One last time, Ashley, people sometimes notice the good things of what we do. Last Friday, Department of Transportation, I think, went to Overland Park, and they accepted an award here. I have it with us. This is the 2015 Municipal Concrete Award for the North Campus Improvement Project. So every year, they, they recognize a outstanding city concrete project, an improved new city, and this year, we were awarded that, which is kind of a big deal. So anyway, you can pass on ours with that. Now, that's a significant improvement there for our, for our community, and we can recognize for that. Stay the walk. So, great addition.
That's awarded by who?
What's that?
That's awarded by who?
Uh, Kansas Rail Mix Association.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Folks who do the concrete stuff, yeah. A couple of other things kind of happened at the state level, actually. If you watch the state, the state address by the governor, he mentioned a number of things there that will impact local government. One in particular is a property tax lead. There is a bill, there is a movement in the legislature even as we speak, to move the property taxes up to make them effective this year, July of 2016, rather than waiting for a year or two, which would have been actually too much a cycle going forward. I don't know if that's going to pass, but it's being pushed pretty hard by the Kansas Realtors Association, so it may, may actually have a chance. So that, that tax lead may actually come sooner than people thought it would go. So we'll be tracking that. The league has been, of course, testifying and whatever on that. The other thing is, met with John Devine here this week, he did have a potential candidate to be an interim city administrator, but that person backed out, so we're kind of back to square one on that. I contacted the league today, see if they have any people who would be willing to do that here in the next couple of months, come out here, but I didn't hear back from them today, so I don't know. So, and John was going to contact some more people Monday night. I don't know, I didn't hear, I did not hear from him today, so. Whatever. So that's kind of where we're at on that at this point, so, whatever.
That all?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Glenn at this time? Next thing on our agenda item is a public comment. Garrett McLaire and Rebecca Katz, Mitchell County Food Pantry funding proposal. Do you have to come forward, please?
I've got copies in hand for follow along, is anyone want one before I begin?
I can take one.
I think, well, I've got 10 now.
Well, my name's Garrett McLaire, and with me is Rebecca Katz. We're members of the Beloit High FCCLA. FCCLA stands for Family, Community, or, yeah, Leaders of America. And as members of FCCLA, we push for a change that benefits our friends, family, community, and ourselves. In September, the Mitchell County Food Pantry put an ad in the paper asking for donations, because their supplies were low. Well, at FCCLA, our push for change, we have national community service projects, and this year, the service project was feeding the hungry. So we responded to the ad and did a food drive. We were, we brought in one truckload of food, and that lasted them three weeks. The Beloit High Student Council did their annual food drive. They brought in two truckloads of food and over $2,000. That was out shortly after Christmas. So there's a problem here, because the food pantry serves individuals and families who find themselves in emergency need of food. Well, if the food pantry is feeding people, then why are they running so low? It's a problem. We're hoping that we can fix that. And so Rebecca and I did some research and some calling, and I got ahold of the public relations manager of the food pantry. Her name was Beverly James, and she told me that in the 2015 year, the food pantry served 135 families, which equals 897 people. Compared to the population of Mitchell County, that's 13.3 percent. So one in 10 people in Mitchell County benefited from the food pantry in the 2015 year, and the majority of those people lived in Beloit. And so every Tuesday, they're open from 9:00 to 11:00, and every Tuesday, they serve approximately three to seven families. And so when I was talking with Beverly, I asked her about food pantry contributors. Surely they've got plenty of them. And it seems like they do. The Beloit High School, their student council, does one every year, and they're the largest contributor. But it runs out after a month. Dollar General and Catlin's, they have donation boxes. The Cunningham Telephone and Cable Company, every year from November to December, their customers can bring in one canned item, and that equals $1 off their bill, and they can bring in 15 items. They said that that was a, they said they get a pretty good turnout from that. And the Tipton High School and the Wilson Telephone Company team up. The Tipton High School, for every item that the students bring in, the telephone company chips in $1. They said that's also a pretty good turnout. And then there's a joke contest sponsored by a local radio station to raise funding. And so after all of these contributors, I asked them, when are you low during the year? They said New Year, April Day, and Christmas time. Well, if New Year's January and Christmas time is December, that's four months out of the year. That's a third of the year where they're running low on food and need help. And so what can we do about it? Our goal is to achieve funding for the food pantry through monthly donations that can be made by citizens and businesses. How? Well, we can give the option to donate $1 a month through the city bill. I contacted the city office, and they said every month they send out about 2,200 city bills. So if, so that's potentially a lot of money that can be donated. And so then that money will be given to the pantry, and they can use it for groceries as by the pantry, and it can also be used as an emergency fund that they can set aside and use for when supplies are low. And Stockton, Kansas, did the same thing recently, and so I called their city office, and in the first month, they only had 62 donators, but that was solely on, that was based solely on word of mouth. So the people that knew that this was going to be passed, only 62 of them donated, and they're going to be sending out a formal letter notifying the city bill recipients of the potential donation. And so they're expecting it to quadruple within the next couple of months. And so if 62 donators equals $62, when you take that times four, that equals $248 a month, which is about $3,000 a year. So what if Beloit did the same? We have 2,200 city bill recipients. So what if only 5% donated, like Stockton with their 62 donators? Then that equals $116 a month. Take that times 12, and you're looking at $5,500 a year. And that is a lot of money that the food pantry can use to buy the groceries and help feed the people in Mitchell County. And so as members of FCCLA, this would definitely be a project that would benefit the community. It could benefit friends. It could benefit family. It could even benefit ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett and Rebecca.
And then you got some copies around here.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the downtown CDVG final performance. We will now open that hearing. Is there any comments from anyone? Question? Come on up, Glenn.
Before Mr. Rover gets all kind of this, you have to thank me. On behalf of North Central Region Planning Commission, I just wanted to say thank you to the council, and even for the, the staff that we've worked with, to enable such a project that has impacted so many businesses and employees in the community, let alone just the historic nature of this downtown area, to keep it intact for hopefully 50 more years on that side. We've worked with every single address on that side of Main Street in the past five, six years, and it's been very positive to see the transition. Concordia would have done something similar, but this particular program and the kind of project is unique in Kansas. We don't know if Commerce will continue to do it for many more years, but there's only been about four or five of these done in the state. Concordia and Beloit are two of them, so I feel fortunate to be part of that process. And hopefully, things stay intact for a longer time, so the businesses can operate in those structures.
My name's Jeff Rover. You guys know me, I think. I represent NCK Properties. I'd like to thank Glenn and Doug McKenny and NCKCN for allowing us to participate in the grant and help us through the process of the grant side. I'd like to thank all the city council members that supported us. Without the council members, we would not have ever seen a successful project. I think it's a great project for the downtown. It helps reinstate the buildings to a sustainable state that will make them last a lot longer. And, so yeah, thanks very much.
Did all the buildings on the north side get the metal window frames?
Not...
Through individual, there were only three addresses as part of this particular project. Fouts had done theirs previously, and First National Bank had done theirs previously as well. Then on the opposite side, two or three others had done something.
I look, or... Linda's look good. I mean, I just noticed them yesterday when I saw them.
We still have several things on our list to do on the fronts of the buildings, but we have to wait till the ones back up.
Did you get your timeframe okay with finishing up and all that for your...
Pretty much everything's done. But everything's, yeah, everything's done on the grant side. The rest is on our side. We basically had to wait for some of the project to get done before we could actually do the other stuff that we have planned, which is doing the awnings for roses, building the Beloit car rental building, and repainting the fronts and stuff.
Did the full house get new windows, you know, front?
Another, another full house did not get...
Just upstairs.
Just upstairs. And then the common between us.
Well, thank you for stepping up and, because I know there's a financial contribution on your part to this grant, too.
Yeah, and it stayed right there within, pretty close to the budget. 74% grant, 26% owners. It sounds pretty close.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
In your packets, you also have a thank you from Gloria Holmeyer, who had to be in Nebraska tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks a lot. Great commitment. Any other questions during our public hearing? If not, we'll close our public hearing, and we'll go to the next item is the consent agenda from January the 5th, council meeting minutes and appropriations one D.
I'm going to motion with...
Another motion that we approved, the consent agenda in its authority by Peterson and with by Councilwoman Miller. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Kingler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda this evening is Charter Ordinance 14.
I'm going to go through that quick again, because when you came in tonight, you had a different one in front of you, slightly different than what was in your council packet. I wanted to specifically go through those changes so that it's clear what were. First change was in, and these are all formatting and typo type changes, there's nothing substantive. First thing is Section 2, I eliminated the last sentence of Section 2, which states two council members shall be elected from each ward. That is also already stated down in Section 6. So, there was a typo in Section 4. The word place had an extra D on it, so I fixed that. And then the last change was in Section 6. Section 6 has to do with how we fill vacancies in the governing body. And previously, I had specifically referenced a Kansas statute. I'm still using the language from that statute, but I took out the reference to the statute and the heading, and I just put the language from the statute directly into Section 6. So nothing substantive changed there, other than I, I didn't like having this statute number in there. In case for some reason that statute were to change, then we'd have to come back and do this process again. So, I'll take that out. Questions? And we went through last time in the work session specifically what all this charter ordinance does. The large majority of what it does is clean up the code book for codification purposes, clean up a lot of our previous charter ordinances that were out of date. It deals with the fall elections that were mandated, that legislature mandated that cities passing ordinance change elections to the fall, so it does that. And then it exempts us out of the new statute 12-104A, that is quite contradictory with several other statutes in the league, and yes, probably recommended that all cities exempt out of that statute because it's complex and confusing.
So we can still just go ahead and adopt the ordinance 14 as we have?
Yes, yep, yep. We could be adopting the one that was in front of you tonight.
So we have, throughout the election, April this year?
April this year, yes. And then those terms will be three-year, nine-month terms. The next election will be held in November of 2017.
So effectively, mine's up to two years, I would go off, end of December.
You're up in April of 2018. You will now go January of 2018 is when your term would end. So we're shorting that term just slightly to, to come in line with the fall, fall elections in odd numbers.
Do I still get my paycheck?
You're going to be messing up if you want to pay.
There goes my credit.
Thanks, King.
Yep.
I entertain a motion to adopt Charter Ordinance 14. It's been moved by Councilman Richard, that we adopt ordinance 14, Charter Ordinance 14. Who has...
With the changes.
What?
With the changes.
With the changes, yes. Motion by Richard, second by for him. Any further discussion?
We need six votes to pass.
Yeah. Okay, Manny, would you take a roll call vote?
Peterson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Latrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Kingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Audie?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance passes. Next item on our agenda this evening is the water pipe bid from HD Supply in the amount of $13,908.76. Any questions for staff? No questions for staff. I entertain a motion to accept.
I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
Do we know where this pipe is going to be used?
Yeah.
It's not in here.
Right now, I have three projects scheduled. Once the weather cooperates, we'll go from, on Court Street, from River to Pine, replacing that main. On South Street, from River, not Mine Poplar, excuse me, on South Street, from River to Poplar, replacing that main. And then on West Court, from Mill to Chestnut, in from Badgers, replacing that main.
Is this all four-inch pipe?
Uh, no, there was some six-inch in there.
Okay, I saw some of the...
But yeah, the mains on Court Street, yeah, both East and West Court are four-inch mains. The one on South is six-inch main.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion to accept the water pipe bid from HD Supply in the amount of $13,908.76 from Councilman Latrell. Have a second?
Second.
Second by. Councilman Kingler. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those that favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is a 2016 four-wheel drive pickup from Beloit Motor in the amount of $28,704.20.
Hey, ever tried to make some comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, I don't think we need a four-wheel drive. Secondly, I don't think we need an extended cab, and if people have to go to school, we got plenty of vehicles to drive. And thirdly, we're going to discuss the future of our water wastewater department. So I feel like right now, we shouldn't put a hold on anything that goes into that department. We've been spending a lot of money on that. I think this is just out of line, personally.
You have comments? How many miles does that pickup have on it?
The Dodge? Approximately 74,000.
How much?
Approximately 74,000. But I believe I mentioned in my recommendation, it would not be actually getting traded in. It will be passed to the park department, so they can get some good use out of it. can get some good use out of it, yeah. What about the one you get from the Park Department? That one is a '94 Ford, uh, half-ton extended cab with 100, approximately 118,000 miles that we used to a trade-in, which didn't really amount to anything, but we came to an agreement, I myself came to agreement with Parks Department, where, uh, what the Dodge would have brought on a trade-in as opposed to what Ford brought, will be recouped back to the budget from the Parks Department to the water from the wastewater.